Kate, could we have roll call, please?
Sean Kidd.
Here.
Doug Bryson.
Here.
Patrick Evans. Bruce Robinson. Jim Davis. Don Williams.
Here.
Eric Fuerborn.
Here. Okay, and you said Patrick has an excused absence this evening? Okay. What about Jim?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, you've been -- you have copies of the meeting, the minutes?
Wait, wait, you're skipping something.
Oh, excuse me.
I am, I'm just getting ahead of myself, I'm sorry. Can I jump in now?
Number two, introduction of new planning commissioners.
We have two new planning commissioners, one of whom is here tonight. Jim Davis was appointed and is absent tonight. He had a pre-existing obligation. Bruce Robinson is here also, just appointed. He was -- he lives in Rhodes End and is one of our new planning commissioners. And if you say a couple of words, one thing is, you have to speak right into the microphone.
My name is Bruce Robinson. Again, I live in Rhodes End. We, my wife Jane and I, we moved here two years ago next week. I like it a lot in Lincoln City and I'm glad for the opportunity to participate.
Welcome aboard, Bruce. We look forward to working with you and your input. Are there any agenda changes or revisions?
No, there aren't.
Okay, now, minutes. Everybody has a copy of the minutes for the March 5th, 2013 meeting. Are there any additions or changes to that, corrections? And then I had mentioned earlier that I had an excused absence, so. Okay, if there aren't any additional changes, could we have a motion for approval, please?
I move we approve the minutes from the March 5th, 2013 meeting.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, well, I guess I should abstain because I wasn't here, so the minutes are there, but I wasn't. I'm just gonna abstain. Okay. Public comments on non-agenda items or manners not involving a public hearing. And we don't have any public this evening. There aren't any final orders, resolutions, or written communications. And there are no public hearings scheduled for this evening. So, number eight on our agenda is old business, and it looks like we have a scheduled work session on the vacation rental dwelling amendments. And Richard, you're going to have a presentation for us.
Yes, I am. On May 21st, you're scheduled to hold a hearing on some VRD issues specifically about the so-called yes/no zone would be the focus of it. The yes/no issue is really only applies in the R1 zone at this point. I'll get into a little bit more on that later. But most other zones is just automatically yes. So, general commercial, recreation commercial, Taff Village Core, Ocean Lake Plan District, some of the Nelscott Plan District, which I'll get into a little bit more. Not parks, not open space, not industrial, but you know, the, but generally, the big commercial areas would be allowed to have vacation rentals, just automatically. What we're gonna propose for the R1 zone is an overlay zone, the vacation rental overlay zone, which would just be for those areas in which VRDs would be allowed. So, by default, everything else is a no. If it's not in the vacation rental overlay zone in the residential zone, VRDs are not allowed in it. So, one of the things that's gonna come up in the hearings is where to draw the line for the overlay zone. I'm not gonna get into that tonight, that's just gonna be one of the issues, probably the big issue that'll be discussed. But I've just, tonight I was talking about the fact of that we will be proposing an overlay zone, a vacation rental overlay zone for the residential zone. There are, I think, some special cases that need to be looked at. As I say, that in general, everything's a yes, except in the R1 zone. And I wanna go a little bit beyond that. And I'll get into it more, but I wanna explain, like, the first example would be the Nelscott Cottage Residential. In Nelscott, and I'll show one here, we have the Nelscott Plan District up here, next to the 101 sign, is Southwest 29th Street. I'm just trying to set the scene here. Here's Highway 101 coming down here, down 35th, down near the bottom. This sort of yellow crosshatched area in the center that says NCR, that's Nelscott Cottage Residential, it's one of the subzones within the Nelscott Plan District inside the black line there. When the Nelscott Plan District was set up, they took the existing zoning in that area, what's now the Nelscott Business District is, was general commercial. Nelscott Beachside Mixed Use was recreation commercial. And what was in the middle there, what's now the Nelscott Cottage Residential, was I don't think that, and you can see it's now NCR, I don't think that, well, let me get to that. So, it was R1, and you can see, it's this area right in here, it is developed with single-family homes. It's, I don't think that when the consensus committee considered what should be yes or no in general, beyond the idea of yes or no within the R1 zone. I think there are some zones that they didn't realize are essentially R1 equivalents, and I want, so this is one, I wanna bring several of them forward to, I want this one in particular. The existing zoning there says they're not allowed. VRDs are not allowed in the Nelscott Cottage Residential section. Consensus Project didn't specifically address it. We're gonna be recommending that it be a no, unless you wanna apply the overlay zone specifically to it. But the default would be no unless the overlay zone is put on it. So, instead of, what I'm saying, instead of just applying the overlay zone to R1, there's some other areas that I think should be applied to as well.
Is there a particular reason that we're gonna wanna make it a no zone?
The existing zoning, when we went through the whole rezoning for Nelscott, that whole urban renewal process with the community meetings and everything, it was, one of the results of that community process was that it'd be, that VRDs not be allowed in that area.
Okay, so that was a consensus from the residents of the Nelscott area?
That was the general consensus.
General consensus, okay, thank you.
But what I'm saying is, I would recommend that it be possible that the overlay zone extend to that area. I'm not recommending that it does, in fact, I'm recommending that it doesn't, I just wanna make it possible that it could, if, you know, community feelings change.
Okay.
Then, another is Recreation Residential Zone. We have two areas in the city that are zoned Recreation Residential. I'll just show you one, this is the bigger of the two, much bigger. The other one's very small up in the northern part of town. The lake and the D River up here at the top, this red triangle at the bottom is the parking, where the parking garage for the mall is. This is 12th Street or East Devils Lake Road coming along in here. This large area in here is zoned RR Zone. It's another single-family zone. The main, there's different setback requirements and so on. The main difference there is that one of the allowed uses here is recreational vehicles. But as you can see, it's single-family residential. It's another area that is, we need to focus on whether it's in or out, or whatever. The existing zoning ordinance says VRDs are allowed, or doesn't explicitly say it, but the implication is that VRDs are allowed because single-family homes are allowed in that zone, and we allow VRDs right now as accessory to single-family. So, VRDs are allowed in the RR Zone now. The Consensus Project didn't specifically address the RR Zone. We're going to recommend that it not be a yes area. The reason for that is, out of the consensus group, one of the things they said was that basically, single-family east of the highway is no. And this is to support that concept. Then, multifamily residential. The consensus group said multifamily should be yes automatically. And I'm not sure that there was the understanding that there are significant areas of multifamily residential zoning, RM zoning, that in fact are developed single-family. So, I wanna address that. Here's an example. Here's that RR area, just to the right, in the lake and the D River up here. City Hall is down here near the bottom, and that's red. This area is zoned multifamily residential. As you can see, this, there's apartments up here, but otherwise, all this area is single-family homes. There also is an area of RM over here, oceanfront RM, and you see it's single-family homes. So...
I'm sorry, how do I know those are single-family homes from the picture?
Which question?
How do I know they're single-family homes from the picture?
Um...
You've said that three times, and I don't know how I'm supposed to know.
Okay, I'm sorry, because they look like single-family homes.
Okay.
They are.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Again, here's apartments up here, and that's in the RM Zone, that's apartments. There's a, oh, it's not apartments, it's more like a, like a, not a nursing home, but close to it in here. Otherwise, these are, you can see they're small buildings, they're all single-family homes in here. These are some attached single-family, but they are single-family. But my point is that if you look again here, there's R1 area, RM, and then up here is Recreation Commercial. We have different surroundings on some of these RM areas. This area over here, at least some of this RM area over here, multifamily residential is developed single-family. It's east of the highway. I recommend that that in fact be a no area. There, and over here perhaps, because of the way it's developed and being adjacent to the ocean, close to other tourist facilities, conceivably could be a yes area. And similarly, this is up in Ocean Lake. At the top here is 21st Street going across, here's 14th down here. Again, just to set the scene, here's 101. And you can see, it's largely, I can see, it's largely single-family, you can, by the small buildings, it's, it's almost all single-family in there. And again, that area is east of the highway, and so it's a likely no area as well. So, in the RM, VRDs are allowed right now. Consensus Project said it should be yes. We're gonna be recommending a mix of yes and no, some yes, some no.
And those will be defined by the overlays?
Yes.
Blocks?
Right, it would be the overlay zone.
Okay.
Another thing that's being looked at is occupancy limits, and that's something that will be coming to you in a later group of amendments to our ordinances. The consensus group said that there should be some objective outside standard used to set occupancy limits, and they indicated a particular building code. The, under the existing building codes we have in Oregon, if a VRD is built to residential building code standards, it's limited to maximum occupancy of 16 people. That's for something that was, that rule didn't go effect, into effect until July 1st, 2011. So, a house that was applied for, the building permit was applied for after July 1st, 2011, is subject to the 16-person limit now. The ones that were applied for or built before July 1st, 2011 are not subject to the 16-person limit.
Was there a limit prior to the July 1st, 2011?
No, there was no limit. What the, what the code said and still says, there's a maximum of five rooms, five sleeping rooms, I think, is what it says. But it also, they also went on, they amended it in, and the amendment went into effect in 2011, and 16 persons, maximum occupancy.
Okay, well, I noticed in the paper, there's been some discussion, a little bit about safety and that kind of thing.
Right.
How would that fit into some of those larger VRDs that maybe sleep 32 or something like that? Are we going to address that?
Well, the bigger existing ones would basically become non-conforming. If we, if we impose a 16-person limit, the bigger ones become non-conforming. And there's, I haven't looked in the RM Zone, in the R1 Zone, what are they, 17 of them? Something like, no, 13 of them in the R1 Zone. Only one of which, none of which were built or applied for after, or building permit applied for after July 1, 2011. Only one of them applied for its VRD license and permit after that date. That was in 2012. But all of them were built, and so they're not, they're not subject to the 16-person limit at this point.
No, not because of the building code, but as far as, you know, if we are gonna take a look at safety regulations or restrictions in the future, is that something that we would take a look at and put some kind of restriction? I mean, you would think there has to be some kind of restriction on the amount of people that could stay in a home, even though it wasn't necessarily in the building code.
Right.
You're talking about in the annual licensing ordinance, that there might be an occupancy limit set in the licensing ordinance itself.
In the licensing ordinance, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So, it was built to commercial standards, same house built to commercial standards. You could have more than 16 people in it. Even if it was built, you know, built today, it's built to commercial standards, it could have more than 16 people in it. And that's more fire-resistant construction, probably having sprinklers and those kinds of things. So, the question really is, do we want to, going forward, limit to 16, like the building code does in the licensing? Again, this consensus project said use some objective outside standard. Staff recommendation will be that in residential zones, use the residential code standard of 16 going forward.
Okay.
And again, the existing ones that have a higher occupancy would just end up being non-conforming.
Okay. Will you look at sunsetting them at some point, or just, you know, leaving them a non-conforming for like perpetuity, or, you know?
The only thing I've addressed in the draft ordinance as far as non-conformities is the ones that end up in the, existing ones, they end up in the no zone.
Okay.
And what I've said, based on what I heard the commission say, was that they should sunset. And I put in 10 years. That's just a number, it can be any number.
Okay.
But I have not said that a non-conforming one in the yes zone has to go away.
Okay. Richard, could I ask, the occupancy limit, 16, possibly a higher limit for people that retrofit to some commercial standard, that, is that all supposed to be in the licensing ordinance, which is the non-land use aspect of this? Or was there an indication that we retain some of that for, in land use?
My understanding is that the expectation is that the land use piece will go away, and so it would have to be in the licensing. I suppose we could say, in the, in the standards we set for the vacation rental overlay zone, a standard 16 people, maximum occupancy.
Is it possible to just say, in the land use ordinance, that one of the requirements to obtain the land use approval is that you either have obtained or will obtain as a condition of approval all other necessary state-local permits? In which case, the VRD license becomes, if you don't already have it in hand, a condition of approval of the, of the, or is it, was it just envisioned as a zoning compliance check? I guess I'm trying to figure out the process for land use.
Well, what you're saying is possible, but again, I think the VRD land use approval process will no longer exist at some point in the very near future. But like I say, I think we could just have a standard that has to be met. It's not, it's not an approval standard, just a standard that says, you know, maximum occupancy of 16 people. And, you know, anything that exists then becomes non-conforming, whether it uses a higher, higher number. It's relatively easy for us to follow up on those things and just check on how they're being advertised. If they're advertising they sleep 20 when they're only allowed 16, and it's not one of those earlier ones approved, then that's a violation. Also, the housing code, the uniform housing code, sets an occupancy limit based on square footage. That will be relevant to individual rooms, because it's the square footage of a room, you can only have so many people based on, you know, it's like, I don't have the numbers in front of me right now, but it's like for the first 100 square feet, there's two people, and there, or maybe it's one person, and then 50 square feet for each additional one. So, like a room, a small room where you, where people have put in, you know, two or three bunk beds, and pile all the kids in there, that would probably become illegal. You couldn't do that anymore, depending on the size of the room again. And you mentioned about, about the safety standards. That's something the city council is considering, and a couple of city council meetings ago, we discussed that Lincoln City, as far as safety review, only checks to make sure there's operating smoke detectors, smoke alarms. Some communities, like the county, does not check for anything. Deep Bay does not check for anything. Newport, Yaha, it's, other communities do check for other things, some more, some, some a lot more. Carbon monoxide detectors, make sure there's appropriate egress from, from all rooms used for sleeping, because again, we don't want that thing where there's, you know, a bunch of people in a room, especially a bunch of kids, and there's only one way out, and that's blocked by fire. We don't have a second way to get out. Some communities check even just to make sure that, that it's well-maintained. But there's a whole host of things about electrical safety. We had a complaint a few years ago about a VRD that had a hot tub, and right next to the hot tub was a whole bunch of bare wires, 120-volt bare wires. So, we wanna make sure those kinds of things don't happen. So, the council is supporting the idea of having a much more comprehensive inspection program for, especially for safety things.
So, do we know what they're gonna be looking at for safety-wise, or is it, I mean, if you have a second-floor bedroom, are they gonna wanna see a rope ladder up there or anything like that?
Probably not a rope ladder. In fact, that was discussed and, specifically, and it was thought to be a bad idea, because even when there's no fire, people tend, might wanna use the rope ladder, especially if they're, come home drunk.
[laughing]
But have appropriate-sized, like, egress windows, and so that the fire department can reach it and put a ladder up there or whatever.
And general safety concerns, so if the house is near a cliff, that there's warning signs, that there are cliffs in the area? I mean, are they...
That's a possibility, that wasn't one of the things that was discussed, but it certainly could be, you know?
Because I, I'm just envisioning a whole bunch of stuff they can throw in there, and, I don't know.
That's kind of my concern too, and especially when, in light of what we discussed with the clear vision standards. You know, are we opening up this can of worms for something that never was a problem in the first place? You know, do we have records of accidents, of deaths, of injuries?
People falling off the cliffs?
Yeah, just in general, surrounding the VRDs, I mean, do we have anything that says these places are hazardous more than a month-to-month rental, or a hotel, or a single-family occupied?
I don't know that we do, but all these things we're talking about are, would be related to things that are in existing building codes, in particular, building and electrical codes and plumbing codes.
Right.
Because they are safety issues that have been proven to exist.
Right, and I understand, I just, again, like, in light of what we were talking about, we can just open this up and just go on and on of these things.
Yeah, I mean, conceivably, you know, you could, yes, you could go, could be endless. But it, the idea is to have some fundamental level of safety, so people don't come to town and, you know, and all, or we're providing unsafe accommodations for them. I don't think we're talking about going to like the nanny state type of thing, where, you know, just, you know, just come and we'll hold your hand the whole time.
And you start out that way.
More fundamental life safety things we're talking about.
Well, I understand.
So, the first hearing on this, this is on the yes/no zone, and where it should be is scheduled for May 21st. Two meetings from this meeting. Notices, we're still doing citywide mailing. Notices are gonna be mailed the end of next week, April 25th, 26th, around then. Be mailed to all property owners within the city limits, plus any property owner within 250 feet of the, of the city limits. And I should make it clear, we're talking about people who own property in the city, and people who own property within 250 feet of the city. So, a lot of them will be going to people in the valley, or whatever, that own vacation rentals, and so it's not just, not just going to people who are resident in Lincoln City, but people who own property.
So, we can't use the line, "I'm in the mailing zone and I can't come?" [laughing] I'm sorry.
No, you can't.
Okay.
Not for this, you're not in the, you're not in the...
Notification zone?
Yeah, and that would be for quasi-judicial, which is another related thing I wanna talk about. You're likely to get inquiries about the overlay zone, about the map and so on, about the hearings. The matter is going to be sort of a hybrid. It's gonna be legislative as well as ultimately quasi-judicial in some ways. You can discuss things in general terms, because the overlay zone affects everybody equally, essentially, or large groups equally. equally, essentially, or large groups equally. And that's, that's, because it's legislative, you can, you can discuss that freely. The question of, when they come to you and say, "I don't want to be in the yes zone," or "I don't want to be in the no zone," of my particular piece of property, that's quasi-judicial. And you should not discuss that. And so if people want to comment on their particular piece of property, they're free to, if we want them to come to the planning commission hearing on the twenty-first, if they can't do that, or in addition to that, they can submit written testimony, they can email us, they're getting, they're getting notice, this notice is going out at the end of next week, we'll describe their options and so on. But we, you have to be aware that when they get in, when you get into discussing a particular piece of property, that's quasi-judicial, and if you do that, it has to be, you have to bring it up, reveal that discussion, the substance of that discussion, so people have the opportunity to rebut what you were told.
If, if I can ask you a question? I'm kind of concerned about the, what am I looking for? How the meeting will be progressing? Because I've talked to the Ethics Commission about my role in this, and that I can freely participate in the overlay discussion, but when I get into the, the actual red line, it is an actual conflict, and I shouldn't be part of that. Now, is that all going to be in this discussion on, at that hearing on the twenty-first?
Both of those will be discussed on the twenty-first.
Is it going to be separate? I mean, so I could say, "I can be here, but I can't be here"?
I, well, I think, well, normally the way it goes is, you know, there's a staff report that will ordinarily would, would discuss both, you know, here's, here's the overlay zone, and here's where we think it should be, and then, you know, people can get up and testify about the particulars of it.
But we're not going to have a, a discussion of whether or not we're going to do an overlay zone?
I think it might be a good idea to break it up into two pieces. What, what do you think about that, Richard?
Well, generally, you talk about text amendments, and you talk about map amendments. And when you just talk about what the text is going to be in the code, for example, and we talked about this, if you're going to amend the general commercial district to say, "VRD is a permitted use," that's text amendment, that's not something where, you know, anybody's going to say is quasi-judicial. When you talk about a map, it's kind of hard to set, especially in overlay, it's, you know, the test for quasi-judicial is, you know, is it, it's the strawberry four-wheeler's case, and you, you look at a number of different factors about whether or not it's affecting a large group of people, or a small group of people, whether or not it's, you're required to come to a decision or not. The, the problem is, it, it kind of, when you look at the whole thing, it kind of looks legislative. But when someone approaches you and says, "My property, make the line do this," then it starts to look quasi-judicial, which is why, Richard's saying, it's kind of a hybrid, and in an abundance of caution, especially for you, because of the ethics issue, I wouldn't be participating in the overall overlay discussion.
Stan, I think at some point, though, Richard, you'd brought up that this is a totally new area in, in whether we do a yes/no in the first place, and whether we're going to just discuss whether that's something we even move forward with, as opposed to saying just an individual zoning area.
But we actually, I thought we already crossed that bridge, though, we had that discussion, and that's what's been advertised, is the, is the yes or no.
It's what's been advertised, but it's possible that they could recommend against it, and recommend something else.
This, this being a small town, though, we are all affected, no matter where we live. Now, I'm not sure what his particular case is, why he wants to not be involved in this, and why he's talked to the Ethics Commission about it, but...
I was asking.
Well, no, that, that's fine. But we're all affected by it. I mean, we all, most of us live in the city limits, we all live in zones that are either in, or border, or are surrounded by, by VRDs.
Well, there's, there's two issues involved. One is conflict of interest statute two forty-four, one thirty-five, and as well as your own, your own code in chapter seventeen, seventeen seventy-six, I think, that, that talks about conflict of interest, and whether or not you have a personal financial interest, directed substantial interest, I think is the language, in the outcome. And then there is the issue of whether or not this is a quasi-judicial or a legislative proceeding, where you have to disclose ex parte communications and make the decision on the, only the information you receive here at the hearing. So there's really two issues going on there. For most everybody in the room, including, in some respects, Mr. Williams, the, you're all a member of a class, you're all affected by regulations that are adopted in the same way. You may own property, it may be in this district, some of you may own property in a residential district, some of you may own property in a commercial district, any regulations we pass will affect you all in the same way. Because Mr. Williams had indicated he actually owns a, a large VRD, I recommend that he talk to the Ethics Commission, apparently he has, and it's always a good idea, because I can't really protect you from ethics fines, that's why you got to talk to them. It's a good idea to, in an abundance of caution, not participate where there's a question. The larger issue of, if this is legislative or quasi-judicial. My gut reaction is, hey, this is, this is quite, this is not legislative, this is, this is, I'm sorry, this is legislative, this is an overlay, it's a larger approach, but when you start talking about it, it, especially when it gets personal to people, it starts to be about not whether or not the whole city should have an overlay of, in the R1 zone of yes or no, it becomes, A, it's about my property. So while in general, I like to tell you that overlay zones are really legislative, I think this gets to be very quasi-judicial, and therefore, and, and it could go either way, but I would always recommend, in an abundance of caution, that when, whenever you're faced with something that's kind of on the line, you try to make all your decisions based on the evidence before you, the evidence in the record, the evidence that is introduced in writing. I know people have been writing letters, staff is gathering them up, and you'll get them all at the same time. I, I don't know if we've been sending them out, but I know people have been submitting letters to the city council, saying, "Hey, I want to be in, I want to be out." We're putting them all together, we want all, everybody to get the same information. So if someone approaches you and says, "Hey, I, I want to talk about me being in the, in the yes zone," or me being out of the, me being in the no zone, I think the best thing to say is, you best put your concerns in writing and submitting to planning staff, so that all the planning commission members can have that information when we make the decision.
Because we're going, I've just, just one more quick question. Because we're going to be discussing a lot of different areas in the city, can he participate, in your, in your opinion, in most of the discussions, except for one that, that may affect the particular area? I don't know anything about his VRD or where it's at, but, you know, can he talk about boundary lines, or, or whatever, in, in different parts of the city, except for that one that affects his particular area?
When I think about an overlay, and I think about a map, that's how I would break it out. If we were going to talk about those areas north of, you know, City Hall, on, on the west side of the highway, from here to here, if, if you're not in that area, then maybe that's something that you could fairly participate in.
Mm-hmm.
But I, again, if you haven't talked about that specifics with the Ethics Commission, you might want to run it by them, but I would think that you would have no ability to affect your own personal interest, in any substantial or direct way, if you're making a recommendation about whether or not property that you don't own, or you don't have any relationship to, is in or out of the zone. I think it's when you start to make recommendations on your own property that you have a direct and substantial interest.
Right.
So, and it applies to everybody here, that if you, or your family, or a business that you're associated with, it, it's in two forty-four, one thirty-five, it's specific to planning commissioners, there's a larger two forty-four applicable to public officers. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I should add that Mr. Appicello, our city attorney, will be conducting a training session at your meeting on May seventh, to go into ethics and procedures and those kinds of things, so that you're in a, you'll be in a good, a good recently educated position on the twenty-first to, to approach the, the hearing and the conduct of the hearing.
If I could piggyback on that, through my discussions with the, the investigator at the Ethics Commission, they are now offering those courses online, too, through their, through their links on the website.
Okay, that's great, that's good. I guess one question I want to ask you as a result of, of earlier things, I, I mentioned some special cases, the Nell Scott Cottage Residential, the RR Zone, Recreation Residential, and the multifamily residential zones. It, it conceivably could be seen as I'm going contrary to the, the consensus group. I don't think I am, but I guess the question I'm asking you is, does what I've said seem reasonable? Do you want me to bring it forward that way, or do you want me to just stick with the way the, the consensus group did it?
I, I think what you've presented this evening is a reasonable starting place, we have to have something, and I'm all in favor of, of you proceeding with, with what you've given us this evening. And then I'm sure we're going to hear testimony for or against, and, and get insight and input from a lot of different people when we, when we have the, the meeting. It's my opinion.
I'm kind of leaning in...
Don, you were, you were, you participated in it a lot.
Well, yeah, my wife was a direct participant. We were both asked to, and we decided, well, it should just be one, but of course, I got the briefing every night. I, I just want to say, and I'm not advocating, honestly, I'm not, other than the fact that these were a lot of people who put in a lot of time, and walked every square mile of the city to determine these, to make their decisions. This wasn't just four or five guys in a room going, "Yeah, let's do this." This was everyone well-advertised, well-participated. I think it needs to carry some weight for that, and the fact that, you know, we committed fifty thousand dollars for this, shouldn't just be sneezed at.
My understanding, and I'm not arguing with you at all, I'm just trying to, my understanding is that where the walking was done was in the existing R1 zones. So I, I think that the, like, the Nell Scott Cottage Residential, the RR Zone Recreation Residential, people may not have understood that those exist, and that those are really are, are another kind of single-family zone, and people may not have understood that large parts of the RM zone are developed for single-family.
I guess I kind of have a question, why that wasn't brought to anyone's attention?
Well, I'd say, as far as the planning department, I made, I made a very conscious decision to answer questions that were asked, but not to inject the planning department into the process, because of perception on some people's part that we were biased.
Well, it's just a, a straight regulation, I mean, if it says, "This area should have no VRDs, period," it's not a matter of whether you're trying to influence, it just exists.
I just didn't want us to be shaping what the committee ended up doing. I thought, I thought it would be much cleaner for the committee, for, for the planning department to, to stay out unless specifically invited in.
And again, I'm not advocating one way or the other, I just, I, I want to put a lot of weight behind when a group of citizens get together and discuss these things openly and honestly, that, that we pay attention to that.
Sure, oh, absolutely, absolutely, I agree with that a hundred percent.
That, that's one reason I didn't participate, because I'd been listening to hearings for six years, and I didn't want to, like Richard, I wanted other people to put some thought and time into it, see what they could come up with, and I didn't want to have any preconceived notions that I may or may not have formed over the years from all my meetings, so...
Right. Yeah, all I'd say, it was, it was an exciting process. I mean, it was all public, so I, I'm not saying anything that wasn't known anyway. It was, it was a very dynamic, a lot of new friendships were made that, that you never would have thought would have happened, you know, some really opposing parties came together on some of these things, and that's, I, that's my two cents worth. I think it's a good plan.
So anyway, that's where we are, we'll be, the draft ordinance, actually, we just sent it to Department of Land Conservation Development today, we, today was the deadline to send it. It will have a, a provision relating to those VRDs that end up in the no zone, and as, as I said, based on, on what I heard from the, the commission, is that they should sunset in a, in a certain number of years, and what I recommended was, or what I put in, I don't necessarily I'm recommending it, but what I put in was ten years. And there also is, is a provision that if the owner dies, the heirs can continue to honor existing reservations for a year. It's not, doesn't just shut down automatically and leave people stranded, or whatever, without, without a place to go.
That was one of the recommendations that you're, that we talked about last time, that you want to make sure gets introduced?
Right.
Okay.
And that was one that the, that the, the consensus group wanted, and so that's, that's recognizing that.
Okay. Anything else?
No, I, I guess just to say that this is, this is the first step, and then there's, there's, there's another major step of addressing the land use regulations, and also addressing the, the licensing regulations, and just, you know, the idea of, the intent from the, the consensus group was to essentially eliminate the land use side of it, and just have the licensing side, which seems, it's my expectation of what will happen. So this is step one, it's not all of it, there's another big step after this, too, and that's not scheduled yet, but it'll be sooner rather than later.
Okay. Do we have any idea or expectations as to how many nights meetings this way?
Well, I'm guessing that you won't get it all on the twenty-first, and I'm expecting that you'll continue it to the, the first meeting in July. The city council has scheduled their first hearing on, on this matter for their second meeting in July, I think it's July twenty-fourth.
July or June?
July.
For June.
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 June. Yes, June, I'm sorry. And then I expect that they will probably carry over into July, so I expect something to be adopted in July.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else have any questions or comments? When will we be receiving our packets for this, Richard?
Um, I can, actually, I can get the ordinance to you pretty quickly, the packets ordinarily go out, you know, on the same ordinary schedule.
Okay, it just sounds like there may be, I know Richard wants us, wants us to get all the information at the same time, make sure we all have it, but it sounds like there may be a lot of letters and things to read and digest, so if, if we could get some of it, so we didn't have to read it all at once, it, it would be helpful to me, anyway, I don't know about how everybody else feels, but, so...
We can check into that.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Next is new business, and there's no new business scheduled this evening. We're down to reports and comments from the community development director.
Change my seat?
Yeah.
I have no comments.
Put on a different hat. Nothing? Uh, Richard, do you have anything? No, okay. Commissioners?
Anybody?
Public comments? We have no public this evening, so the next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, May seventh, and we have a, it looks like a couple of, a work session and, and two public hearings, one for variance, one for a, a conditional use permit.
Right, and that's the, from the doggy daycare...
I knew I recognized that name, that's what that one is.
Yeah, and they want to actually be able to have the dogs sleep over, so...
Okay, and to spend the night.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, okay, and then after that, we have the zoning ordinance amendments for the, on the twenty-first, so...
Right.
Anybody have anything else? Okay, our next meeting then is May... Okay, our next meeting then is May seventh, six P.M., this time in this place. We're adjourned. Thank you.